Thirty. Uh, remind everyone that this open session is being digitally recorded, so be careful and as you speak. Uh, anyone here for open session? Okay, do you have any additional announcements since we could go?
No, nothing additional, just DINGY DASH is coming up August twenty seventh and the, the entries for that will be the first thing up, which would be August twentieth. So, um, get those entry forms in and start building those votes, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a consent agenda that needs to be approved, uh, before I ask for the motion. Either on the minutes, approval of minutes, May twenty third, the only one who wasn't there was Peter. There's three of us, so there is a call room, so, um, we can vote on that. And then there's the designation of Ed Galant as a motor driver in DPW. So, does anyone have a hold on either one of those?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion made and second too, it's like, any discussion? Uh, we'll use voice, uh, votes tonight because Peter's on Zoom, so, um, Heather?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Motion's carried, okay.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone in attendance on the Zoom meeting, which is encouraged and acceptable if you do want to speak to any of the items you've left, but in case anyone else is out there, raise your hand and I will acknowledge you.
Okay. All right. We will go to new business then, the first item on new business is the TA search consultant. It will require a vote after the presentation and discussion. Were you able to finish up on the second one?
Yeah, so both, uh, both proposals are currently in your package, so I can tell you, um, reached out to, to both firms. Both firms are highly recommended, as you saw in the proposals that they put forward. As Heather described you before, you're going to get a comprehensive community profile as part of this meeting and consulting with the, um, the search firm, I mean, the search committee, which will be good to help provide them structure. The last time you did a search here and I was involved, your interim TA was pretty much acting as a board's consultant and helped lead people through the process. So, I do think that is useful and, uh, price points are, are pretty similar. Um, you can look at those, I, I don't want to necessarily project their proposals at this time, not that it's not a public document, but, uh.
Which is the second one, cause I only saw the first one earlier.
So MRI consultants.
Yeah, it's down.
Uh, this one? Um, this is the second one?
Down, uh, the last one on the left.
It's the last stock in that.
Oh, the last one, okay, okay.
Well, actually, what's the first?
I have a hard copy if you want to look at it.
No, don't worry about it, I got it, I just gotta find the right, I looked at one earlier, but there's now a second, so, uh.
So you have community paradigm associates and MRI consultants.
So one of the things that MRI does differently, or at least they outline in their proposal, unless I missed it, in community paradigm, I'm sure if I do, Ryan will let me know, and having been through the process with both of the consultants as well, um, MRI does, and we can take it or leave it on this piece, um, and I'd like to discuss, but they do offer the opportunity to do essay questions to candidates and they do some, um, some background online searching prior to even sending them over to the screening committee, which I believe is a little bit distinguished from what community paradigm does. All right, that being said, um, in order, it, it seemed like when I was looking through, I didn't see the, did you see a completion date on community paradigm when they thought we'd have someone in office? Cause it looked like they had the offer potentially going out to a candidate November first from MRI. Did you see anything that was specific to that? It seems like ten seventeen is their twelve week process in community paradigm on their chart.
Looking at it now.
This is what I'm referencing, Jeff, for community paradigm.
So, mid-October for the, the twelfth week, which would be the final interviews.
Okay.
Just, both consultants said they would meet with the board and refine things if, um, you know, if, if the board needed that, it was necessary. Uh, MRI in particular said that they could adjust based off the, the level of input that's needed for them to be part of the process. This is their upper limit, so this would be as high as it goes.
And so they also felt that they could work within our time?
Both of them did, they was, they knew that this was a start immediately type thing and, and both are interested. Coming off engagements in, from each, just coming off engagements which were included in your packets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm just looking at Paradigm, they do do the pre-check screening.
But they don't do the essays.
Correct, according to the scope board.
Yep.
I don't know if they could be included, but.
All right, I have a question.
And I told Jeff, I'm sorry, I ethically cannot say either one in my opinion, so I won't be able to draw out a recommendation, but I can help walk you through the details.
Crap, that was gonna be one of my questions. You're, you're the other one, TA, can you say it or no? Could you ethically not?
Well, I, I'm not going to on a, on a publicized meeting, so you'll have to read my brain, but, uh, sorry. Um, small, it's a small TA world, Katie, you know this.
They burn yourself.
Well, you know, both of them offer very different, you know, I think it was a very different feel going through both of their processes. It didn't feel exactly the same, it felt different. Um, my, you know, just looking at one first and looking at the MRI one to look at, um, so, you know, if we were to go with them, I would suggest, you know, especially because of the interest of time and everything else and knowing a candidate going through this process, unless they're going for like the dream job, does not wanna have to commit every ounce of their spare time to job searching. And when you job search for one of these positions, because you're doing all the background research, you're preparing, you're knowing all your interview questions, you're reading annual town reports, you're reading all the finances and so forth, you are literally doing a full-time job on top of your current TA, full-time job. So making it any harder for someone to come through the door, I don't think we want to do that, right? So, I would say, I would forego the essay requirements or the essay suggestion. I would say instead that not only are we saving time, we're also making it less strenuous for an applicant, but we just ask them to submit a written, you know, one of their writing samples.
It's an optional thing, in other words.
Yeah, well, I, I would take it out, I would say we'd still require something, but we'd just require a writing sample, right? So it could be, you know, your monthly town administrator report, it could be the annual town administrator report, it could be an analysis, it could be a memo. You just want to make sure that someone is able to put their thoughts into writing and they're comprehensive. People who are currently TAs, it's not a problem, because if you didn't understand what they were doing and they weren't good at putting things in writing, they wouldn't still be in the job they're currently in if they can't communicate with people. But people who are coming from a role that's not the same, right, something that's more in the back, requires less communication, you don't know. And every town's different as to how much writing, I mean, Ryan, you must have found it, well, I don't know, previously though, in your veterans' role, did you write more there than you do here, or do you find the opposite?
I write a lot more here.
So, in various towns I was in, I actually found that when I was in, um, Wellesley is in council on aging, I wrote like ten times the amount that I write in a TA role. So I think, you know, there's information out there that backs it up and is able to hold the essay piece, so that that would actually skip time there. Um, there, I mean, community paradigm, there's pros and cons to it, right? They just did, they got all the local contracts, right? So they just did Sterling, they just did Holden, they just did et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, is it always the best benefit that they've already been in all those different communities, right? Cause you can only tap the same people so many times.
I'm curious in terms of, um, quickly looking at the list, et cetera. We, and maybe if you know if not, uh, which of these have, if either have had experiences with towns our size?
That's what I was just gonna ask, is, does one of them more geared to small town compared to larger, or?
So MRI just did Berlin for the second time, they did Berlin the first search, um,
I think that's them.
And they just did Berlin again. Um, community paradigm, they just did, uh, what was it, um, Sterling, Lancaster, so forth, I, sorry, like all the local ones, West Boylston.
They're bigger than us too, and.
They are, they are.
Have more money, right?
Yeah.
So just reading the references, um, Harbor, Blackstone, South Kingston, Lakeville, Greenfield, Connecticut, that's MRI.
Yeah.
As Heather just said, they just finished up Berlin. And.
So they've had experience with to, smaller towns.
And they have, um, community paradigm has ongoing recruitments with Boxborough, Brookline, Clinton, Ipswich, New Bedford, Watertown, and West Boylston.
Mm-hmm. Peter, do you have anything to, you want to say?
I didn't get, I didn't see the second, the, uh, the paradigm one, so, um, I mean, I was pretty moved by the one from Portsmouth, New Hampshire, the MRI one, so I kinda liked that, and I thought that was more in line, in line with towns our size.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess, I just have one, and Ryan, I don't know if you'll know the answer to this.
Yeah.
When I was looking through the proposal from MRI and they were doing their quote of, you know, nine thousand dollars, and then they also talked about marketing and they recommended one to three thousand dollars for marketing. Do you happen to know what they, what they do for marketing outside of, you know, MMA, maybe the ICMA, STAM?
I don't, except, um, this is advertising, so I'm assuming they're gonna go to all those traditional channels that we know about.
Cause that was a huge difference in marketing.
Yeah, because.
The other one was like three hundred bucks.
Well, they just flat out said MMA, I mean, I, I guess, again, we can set that agreement with them however we like and tell them where we want to advertise.
It said one to twelve, one thousand to twelve.
Oh, for the advertising?
Yeah.
I read what number I had in my head.
So that's advertising, reimbursement of travel expenses, facility costs, uh, food on interview days.
I just saw it too, one of those.
And I did notice, you know, I didn't, I don't know if that was in community paradigms thing, I haven't seen that before, um, I, I don't think it's gonna be relevant, cause I don't think we're gonna be pulling people who really need this, but reimbursement of candy, travel expenses? No one's paid for me to go to an interview, right?
No, I missed the.
So, just, just want to be clear that.
Yeah, okay.
Not in support of that.
Yeah, yeah, if you, yeah.
Peter, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I, I agree with everything, uh, that's been said.
Okay, then, let's, I'll see if we can get a motion here, um, I will. Real quick, Jeff, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road.
Mm-hmm.
Ryan, can you just very quickly say why you'd have to recuse yourself from making a recommendation, what the conflict of interest is?
Um, I know all of the search firms and just worked with one of them to do recruitment in Carlisle.
Okay.
Um, and just professionally, it doesn't benefit me to say one is better than the other.
Put yourself in that position. And Heather, presumably you're kinda in that same.
To an extent, yes.
To an extent, okay, thank you.
I don't think you can go wrong with either firm, and I'm not just saying that, it just really depends on fit, who you think they're working with.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
And I never say this, but you, it does fit in your timeline to either send more questions to them, or, um, if, you know, people are seeing the proposal for the first time tonight, we are meeting next week, so, um, just something to throw out there.
Thank you.
But if we made a decision tonight, we could theoretically have them on the agenda next week, meeting with us to get this rolling.
Yes, I'd like to put it out there, um, and ask for a motion, just, we can always, if there's more discussion, we can have. I like the idea of the towns that are roughly our size and so forth. So I would like to request a, a motion to go with Municipal Resources, Inc.
I'd make a motion that we hire Municipal Resources, Inc., uh, as our town administrator search consultant.
Motion's been made.
I will second.
And second, okay, motion is open for any discussion. Peter, do you have anything else to say?
No, sir, I'm good.
Any discussion here? All right, and we'll call for a vote, we'll go by voice since Peter's on Zoom, so Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And me, yes. Motion's carried. So municipal.
MRI.
MRI, that's easier. All right, um, item two, and I'll turn this over to Ryan to status on as the appointed interim town administrator, and that will also require a vote, so.
So in previous discussions with the interim town administrator, given you a variety of options, of course, you can take them or come up with your own options. The, um, idea being, once you know the timeline, which I think you know now, based off the consultants that you are potentially hiring, and the timeframe they presented is about October, so you're looking at about sixty to seventy-five days from now, interviewing final candidates, and then you're gonna add six weeks to that for, for a reasonable amount of time for anybody who's currently a town administrator. You might be able to speed that up, but I would add that just in case. So you're looking at December one.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Welcome to Hovers.
Um, and, you know, things happen, so that can speed up or slow down. So given the timeframe of two to four months, I'm, I've been recommending to you and, and will recommend again that you choose, um, either someone who's local or a candidate, an internal candidate to keep what's going on current, keep the staff cohesion together in preparation for a new town administrator who, who can take the reins over. Um, I just make that recommendation, but of course, it's your, your appointment, your discussion, so.
Okay, uh, should, are we mentioning names, Jeff?
My, my recommendation was, uh, Sandy Nason, who's our current treasurer. And in due diligence, I spoke with council about her role as treasurer and then the identified financial roles for the town administrator in the charter. So the board, if they were to go with that recommendation, would need to differentiate some of the financial aspects, so that there isn't a conflict. So the treasurer prepares the warrant for signature by the town administrator. They recommend keeping that separated, so either be in a consultant role or the board of selectmen's appointee to sign warrants per the charter is acceptable and would solve some conflict of interest there. It's not specifically contract interest, you just want to avoid it and have those strong financial controls. And then, of course, any other roles that you wouldn't want her to play, or whoever's chosen, uh, you can identify that and make that clear as the executive body by charter. So if you didn't want her doing certain things because she's the treasurer, then that, that is something, of course, you can decide.
So.
That's also, uh, okay, I could do that too, right?
So in the past, the chair has signed warrants.
Chair, okay, all right.
And that's something Sandy or I could prepare for you.
Mm-hmm.
Train on, et cetera, what we do, so that the board can feel comfortable with, with that. Other towns do that too, I don't recommend it, but.
Okay.
So, I still have a question.
Okay, I'm gonna. We can discuss.
So, yeah, so, let's just walk down this road for a little bit here. So Sandy's basically gonna have, if we appoint her, have power of signing and making sure that the paperwork end is okay. Who deals with the actual problems? Like, everyone that marches into your office and sits down in your chair, whose, whose problem is that?
That would be Sandy's.
Okay. That's what I worry about. That's, all right, so somebody comes in with like an HR problem 'cause inter-office stuff and headaches, how's that gonna play out?
Well, she can't handle it, she can call legal counsel, that's why we employ legal counsel.
Okay, cause that's what I worry about, is like, you know, in-office stuff.
When in doubt, you call.
That, not that I foresee anything, but you know how this goes? All good plans and then it goes, something goes over there. Um, but yeah, the just, that's the one concern I have is the, like, the HR and the, the somebody that comes in that wants to talk. Normally we talk to you, shut the door and start yelling, you know?
Does that actually do anything when you shut that door?
No.
No, no, you can still hear it, trust me, they, yeah, but you can.
I don't have walls.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, there's no, there's no walls, but you can pretend, it, it makes you feel better, yeah.
There's no problem, not this building, there's no privacy.
But if there's a problem somewhere, they, you know, you go in and you shut the door and you have a lovely conversation with whomever is sitting at that desk. And they attempt to deal with it.
So the authority of my position gives me the ability to handle conflicts, but that doesn't necessarily equate to peace. So there are some people who are very comfortable coming to me and there, there's some people aren't, that's gonna be true of anybody you bring in. So if you bring in a third party, the same might exist. And did with, with David here, I think he would say the same thing, some things he could handle, some things he couldn't.
Yeah.
Some things he reached out to me for, some things he reached out to you for.
Yeah.
I think that same relationship is, is going to exist.
Okay.
No, you'll never find someone who everyone's happy with.
Oh, God.
Peter, do you have anything, questions or discuss, anything to add?
Uh, can you hear me? I keep losing audio in and out.
We can, I can hear you now, yeah. Oops.
Nope, he's frozen. And you're frozen, oh, there you are.
I can't hear you.
You're back, can you hear us now?
Yes, it keeps going in and out, so, uh, I, I, I don't lose video, I just lose audio, I can't figure that out, so.
Do you have any feelings towards this?
Um, no, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, the TA's, uh, choice, um, I have no issues with it and, um, you know, just, you know, the important thing is, uh, that extra signature, you know, to, to make everything status quo for like, you know, the chair of the select board signing stuff, I am totally in vogue for that, so, and signing warrants and whatever else.
Okay. I think another thing, I, is Sandy is certainly familiar
Mm-hmm.
with everything that's going on, everything that Ryan's been working with, as opposed to bringing in someone
Yeah, nobody, yeah.
who has to learn and figure out what's going on, Sandy's on board and, uh, so I would favor that myself. Um, I would be willing to take the responsibility as chair for the, cause I'm available, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
So that wouldn't be a problem for me in that sense.
That way we can distinguish, and that way we don't, if he need, something needs to be signed, that.
Yeah, and I don't wanna go too far down the rabbit hole, but if HR is a concern, you can make it clear to the rest of the staff that if there's an issue, they can come to the select board, which they have that right anyway.
Yeah.
Let's just say, hey,
Okay.
deal with it internally and then
Yeah.
we're available, but.
Yeah.
S- so if we were to appoint Sandy, would we be looking to do a, um, interim agreement with her?
I, yes.
Okay.
Just to protect the town.
And Ryan, what is your last date, your last date for us?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
So this would take of fact August sixteenth at midnight, August seventeenth at midnight.
And one of your earlier notes, was it for the last meeting or the meeting in four, when you were suggesting this as a possibility? That, I believe you mentioned, um, finances in terms of figures, to answer your question. Should this go through, what would mean in terms of salary for her, et cetera, you mean?
I think it's reasonable to, to pay the difference between her salary and my salary
Mm-hmm.
for the time that she's appointed.
That's what you were asking, right?
No, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were, oh.
It's not a strong negotiating tactic, but, um, it's budgeted, it makes sense, and I think the town would go for it.
Mm-hmm.
Are you able to stay as the interim whatever head, uh,
Consultant?
Consultant, thank you, Jesus. Uh, consultant through that whole December timeframe, or just, are you only at the two-month mark? Are we gonna be at a certain point, like you're gonna just be able to draw a line in the sand and we're gonna be flying solo for a little while? Where, where do you stand in this?
So I think that I'll peer out, just because you won't need me as much. So in the beginning, there's gonna be a lot of questions about what was this, what was that, but over time, it's just gonna solve itself.
Well, if we're having a second meeting in November, I don't think we will.
Oh, you're talking about special town meeting?
Town meeting, yeah.
Sorry, I was like special me, meeting, what meeting?
Yeah, if we're having a special town meeting in November.
Yeah, but Sandy, I think, would be, I mean, special town meetings, the biggest part of getting the warrant ready, getting the motions and making sure you have the fin, any financial backup, she's gonna be able to have at her fingertips.
Yeah.
And I think most of the stuff we were talking about for the fall was most likely gonna be zoning dialogue related anyway.
Yeah.
Which means she's just gonna turn over the floor to the moderator and say, here you go.
Yeah.
Additionally, since the budget's prepared and the vast majority of the financial matters are solved, except anything related to the, the changes in the schools, there's not a lot to do in town meeting, except the actual decision, which is the most impactful, but technically, there's not a lot to do.
Now, will she, as you are, um, to be, um, setting up on meetings, et cetera?
With Tony's support, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Who's, who's gonna run the IT end? Cause we know Heather and myself can't handle it apparently, and we're probably the two techiest people here in this group.
Well, we can with a little. I think we just need to do a little more training, one-on-one with Ryan, and I think, as long as I can figure out how to do Chromecast.
I'm like, I don't know, I have no idea, like, I'm lost.
Mike? Yeah, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. Uh, Ryan, you gave some general options and then you gave a specific re- recommendation. Are there any other specific options, i.e. names that you've come up that, um, let's just say Sandy were to decline, um, what's the fallback position, you know? Is there a, a two or three person in, in mind that you have?
Uh, she said she'd, she's comfortable with that, so I don't, I don't think that would change.
Okay. Okay, well, let's pretend there's some other calamity to take her out. I mean, is there anything, any recommendation, or any other candidates below candidate number one that you recommended? If that's a better way to put it for you.
I, I think, I've actually had this conversation with Heather, there's a, a lot of the staff could handle an interim appointment.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they would want to is different, um, the job can sometimes be a lot.
Sure. Sure.
And some of them don't want to take that on, but I, I do think there's plenty of candidates. I also think that regionally, there's people that understand our town that you could appoint, and then.
Uh, then, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's, that's really the direction I was going. You know, the, you got a specific in-house, but do you have a, a regional candidate that you seriously consider?
Not that I would name publicly until I talk to them, but the, uh,
Okay. Okay.
The consultants will also have recommendations and a network of interims that you can choose from. So I think there's four or five backup options.
Okay. Wow, thank you. But also going back to something I, I made a point of in, to that point there, if it's a regional person or someone outside of
Hub its own standard.
you've got a learning curve right away and that's
Mm-hmm.
Against this time, the schedule we're set up, cause we're trying to be aggressive in getting this thing going.
Sure.
So that was another thing in her, her favor, but, anyone have anything else?
So.
Ryan?
Go ahead.
Nope, go ahead, Ryan.
So you need to finish, you need to finish the budget, you need to get through these town meetings, you need someone who's familiar with the, the building situation. You need to get through the ARPA, and then a lot of our grant projects, Sandy can handle all of that. Other than that, I don't know that you could put anything else on the interim, there's just not enough time, and those are kind of the big moving pieces.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Peter, are you all set? Do you have anything else? He's, he's, he's waving, he's all set, I don't hear you, but.
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion, so that if you are for it, just wave, if you have to.
Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now I got you, yeah, okay, uh.
Yeah, let's go while I, while I got it, while I got your audio.
So if we could, uh, yeah, you'd accept a motion to appoint, uh, Sandy Nason?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sandy Nason as our interim town administrator effective August seventeenth at twelve midnight pending successful contract negotiations.
And if you wouldn't mind adding, I don't know if I can do this because it concerns me, but to have me be the signa, yeah.
Why don't we do it as a second? And I will amend that to have, uh, the responsibility of signing warrants uh, delegated to the chairman, Jeff.
I will second that.
Hell, warrants, there'll, there'll be other things other than just warrants, correct?
I don't know.
It could be.
Anything that's a conflict is a.
It's just gonna be bill roll, interest.
Payroll, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be bills and payrolls.
Okay, all right, uh, motion made and second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call for a voice, uh, Peter?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, he's frozen, damn it.
We'll come back to you. Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Hold on, he's.
Peter?
Hold on.
Wave if you hear me, but.
Can't, he's frozen.
If you are for it.
No, he's frozen. He's frozen. His end must be.
Well, it's carried, so I mean, I don't want to annoy him, but show.
Oh, you actually have to vote on it too?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I was in favor.
Okay. All right.
I just don't want him to feel like.
We'll ask him when he comes back.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He's gone.
He's gone, he's booted.
Okay.
Probably trying to block back him.
We'll move on to new business number three, uh, which is, I'll require a vote. Select Board FY twenty-three Gold's discussion, now, we pretty much discussed these last week, but we'll throw it out there again for any further discussion about these. Uh, go ahead, Heather, if you want.
Well, we did, but I was just gonna say, based on what Ryan suggested, which is a leader. Well, we did, but I was just gonna say, based on what Ryan suggested, which is a later timeline than, um, we were hoping for with the start, we might wanna push some of the dates back on some of these goals, so, I penciled over here, I'll just read them out if this works for people. Uh, number one, start recruiting the police chief search committee we had by October first. I think in talking with Ryan, we talked about maybe January first. Oh.
Can I, excuse me, do we vote on the Sandra Nason?
Yeah, we're waiting for your vote.
Okay, I'm all set, I'm yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passed.
Look at that from here.
Started cutting.
That's okay.
Not a problem.
So Peter, we're on the select board goals now.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so then.
I can hear you now, I, I mean, it keeps cutting in and out, there's a storm coming again, so.
Well, I'll be brief. So, number one, I suggested changing it from October first to January first. Number three, recruit a new full-time building commissioner. I would say the same, because we're not gonna be able to do that without a, uh, TA leading us, and it's too much to put on Sandy, I think, to go through that process.
Yeah.
January first, um, then number six, uh, research and request the renegotiation of the Quabbin Regional School regional agreement, we had by December first, but I think last week, if I remember correct, Ryan had mentioned that this wouldn't be something that we'd really be able to tackle until for the following year.
Mm-hmm.
So it might be something we wanna push to March, so that it gives someone again more time, and just getting the process going, but they should, you know, know what the agreement is before they worry about figuring out what triggers it.
Trying to, yeah.
Um, number eight, did not have a date on it. Charge the town administrator with presenting the select board with the public safety building option that increases the average household new tax impact by no more than two hundred and fifty dollars annually. We forgot the date, I think we had said February of next year, cause we would need it around February if it was going to get us a town meeting.
Well, realistically, would that give the, uh, the new administrator enough time if he's not, he or she is not being hired until December?
At least to start looking into it, if.
I mean, the feasibility study should do most of the, most of the work, then it's sitting with Sandy and crunching numbers.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And figuring out what, what plan of what was presented, they can get within the numbers.
Yeah, cause we have the previous plans, they can retweak them or look at them.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, number nine, charge the town administrator staff with surveying comparable communities for staff retention alternatives. Receive a report with three options that maintain FY twenty-four tax impact of, and then it stopped there. I think we had, um, if I remember correct, I think we had the number twenty-five thousand, and no later than February twenty-twenty-three, so that it can be included in the budgeting process. That's all I had for changes.
Okay.
If that works for everyone.
No later.
Ryan, do you want my scribbles?
No, he's writing it in now, he's fixed it all.
No later than what?
February twenty-twenty-three.
He's already fixed it.
Okay.
Well, he's finishing that last one. It's all up on the board.
Oh, cool, see, I wasn't looking that way.
That's okay. I'm in the actual.
Excellent.
That's why we moved to that.
Document.
Like, but they don't look at direction.
It's gonna be in the others, too.
I could ask a question then, um, with these stakes being changed, should we wait until it can be published? So that we can, so Peter and everybody can see, uh, to change a date, just in case anybody has any questions, as opposed to just voting to, or do, are you comfortable with the?
I, I think we should accept it, because once it's in there, it's in there, and this is a guideline for not only us, but also
Okay.
the, a new TA that's coming in.
Okay, no.
You know what I mean, like, this is stuff that we're expected, yeah.
March one.
So we'll get a copy of this as soon as, right?
It's in, it's already in your folder. I know, you're like, super into the folder, Jeff, I know.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Peter, do you have any, see, anything to offer on the goals and the changes?
I do not.
Okay, um, any other discussions? I'd be happy to have a motion to accept the, uh, select board goals for twen- twenty-twenty-three as, uh, presented by Heather.
So moved. Second. There you go, you just make all the motions.
Thank you for doing that, so moved, okay.
Yes.
Motion's been made and second, any discussion? Okay, we'll go, again, voice, Heather?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Peter? We, we lose him again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I say yes also. Okay.
He didn't have any issues with it, so. I'm assuming he's good with it, but that's an assumption.
Okay, um, if you can still hear us, feel free to jump in whenever you think you are on line. Okay, we'll move to, uh, item four of new business, um, the August special town meeting. Um, one, we have to set, set a date and time, and then be, we need to open the warrant, and each case, uh, a vote will be needed, so throw that out to a discussion, Katie, you on it?
I can care less what day it is, I just show up.
Well, I think the earliest we could do it with opening the warrant tonight and having it closed next week would be the thirteenth Tuesday, right, cause that's fourteen days.
Of August?
It's fourteen day post, so if you close it on the eighth, the earliest we can do it is the twenty-second.
That would make it the twenty-second.
We suppose, oh, I'm in, you know what, I'm in September.
Yeah, I was like, wait, yeah.
Scratch that, I'm so sorry, I'm trying.
That's okay. You're, you're fine.
Let's see that again, okay. What day is today, oh, it's the twentieth, okay, that's right.
Yeah. So are we looking at the sixteenth?
So the sixteenth would be the earliest, cause we do it on Tuesdays, right?
Sixteenth. Usually.
Well, if you close it tonight, you can do it on the sixteenth, if you close it next week, and I guess you're on the sixteenth.
So if, if we close it to.
Yeah, sixteenth either way.
Are we having a meeting again next week? Yeah?
It's the first, it's the first Monday of the month, Katie, we've just been doing specials.
We are. Like, I don't, I know, we like, just, we'll just, apparently every Monday now, all summer long, we'll be here.
So, the only thing on Tuesdays, so Tuesday, in, ARPA, we, we selected our dates before the whole school thing.
Oh, of course you did. Let me guess, you have the sixteenth.
We do, we actually have the ninth, the sixteenth, and the twenty-third. But we can, the twenty-third, we don't necessarily need. We can always move that one if we need to. Um, so the ninth was all applications are in and we determine whether they're completed or not, the sixteenth is deliberations.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's at, that's at six, so theoretically on the ninth, when it's just reviewing of the applications themselves, we could theoretic, well, never mind, the ninth's too soon, so it's irrelevant.
So, the twenty-second is a regular meeting night?
Mm-hmm.
Which is why I recommended that, and I believe I checked your calendar, you're good, too.
So Heather's.
But it's a Monday, do we normally do town meetings on a Monday, is that gonna screw people up?
Well, this is a special.
We have before.
Okay. As long as it doesn't mess anybody up.
No, it's the first one that's chartered, right?
And we would plan to meet before the t- town meeting started?
Yes.
Alright, so, August twenty-second, what, seven PM?
For the, are we talking town meeting at this point?
Yeah.
And our meeting would be like at six?
Six, yeah, beforehand.
Alright, um.
Sound lovely to you all?
Prior to that, do we have another meeting?
August first.
August first.
August first, okay.
Next Monday, Jeff.
That's four votes.
So then we have to close the warrant, uh.
Well, we just wanna make sure you gets to know everyone, you, we want you to be really good at the chair jobs, really do lots of practice.
Yeah. Appreciate that, yeah.
Right off the get-go.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Alright, so do you need a motion on that, or?
Peter, pause, did you hear any of this discussion in terms of the, uh, t- date for the town, special town meeting?
He's gone.
He's gone.
Okay.
I'll let you know when he comes back.
I have a, a question before we get to, to, to a vote, um, just, it was the devil's advocate. What happens if we don't get a quorum?
So that's a good question, so that, that week.
I mean, meaning what took time, et cetera, because of these, what, it's, as you pointed out in, uh, notes to us, it's an important meeting, because they have to decide some important financial matters, if we don't get a quorum, now we're up against the law as well as.
Well, we've, we've had that happen, and everyone in the galley just kind of called all their friends, and so we got a quorum. I'm not making that up.
Mm-hmm.
Bad reception.
Oh, uh, you had to leave the, the building, yes.
So the moderator can postpone the meeting, I'm forgetting the right word, but
Recess, whatever it is.
recess the meeting until a further date. So you could either do the next night or the next week. Uh, both would give you enough time to satisfy the forty-five days.
For the schools. Okay.
And that's why that week was optimal, cause then you run into start of school and that forty-five day deadline.
Yeah. No, I, I was just thinking, because, you know.
It's a worry.
We're always counting as they come in, you know, we need fifty, we need fifty-one.
So, Ryan, two questions. The first answer, I'm guessing, is probably, um, you don't know, I don't know, but if you're asked anyway. Um, do we expect, actually, probably yes, cause I think it, there's this timeline. Is it safe to expect that the governor will have ruled or decide to sign or not sign the FY twenty-three budget before this meeting? So we would know whether or not there was more money going in for chapter seventy and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
That didn't sound.
And number two, have any of the other?
Hundred percent, I was gonna sign it a week ago, so.
Oh, okay.
Huh?
We supposed to sign it a week ago.
Well, I know, but it still hasn't, so. Um, and do we know if any of the other towns have set their town meetings, and where we would fall in the order of the next round here?
They have not, but everyone has the forty-five day.
Okay.
So the only other two that need to are New Braintree and Hardwick. So Barry and Ocam have already passed their budgets, so they don't, they're just getting a discount. They don't need to change their budgets, unless they wanted to, but I doubt, they want to hold this special town meetings.
Okay. Okay.
Why spend money if you don't have to?
So.
Is it possible that we'll be the first again?
Yeah, but there's only like a ten ga- ten day window there.
Okay.
You have to post within fourteen days, so we'll know in the next week. Hardwick TA reached out to me and asked when our date was gonna be, so I expect they'll be deciding tonight as well.
Okay.
So we'll have some kind of an indicator anyway as to which way they, they're leaning. Alright then, if there's no more discussion, then take a motion to, to, for the, setting the date and time of the special town meeting.
And, and opening the warrant.
Alright, so, can that be a twofer, or you need two separates?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to set the special town meeting for August twenty-second at seven PM in the school gym, and to officially open the warrant.
Oh, you're putting them together, alright, fine.
Yeah.
Uh, motion's made.
Second.
And second. Any, any discussion, Peter?
Hold on, he's back.
He's what?
He's back, hold on.
Okay.
Shh, don't chase it. No, he's not, he's his white script.
It's disputed, hi Peter. False oath.
Yep. In theory, he's there, his name's there.
Alright, take a one, rather than, are we still waiting for him?
It's, uh, it's anyone's guess.
I think we should move on, yeah.
Motion made and second, uh, I'll, uh, excuse me, Heather?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Yes, Peter?
Yes.
There we go, yay, right on time.
Hey, hey.
Yeah, um, I had to shut down my computer, it just, I don't know, it's, I got a storm coming in, it's bad, so on my mobile phone, I don't have video, but I do have audio.
Okay, we're gonna move to, um, new business number five. FY twenty-three budget discussion. Uh, Ryan, if there's anything new you could, to report, I'll ask you to start it.
Okay, let me call something up, just give me one second, it's not what I thought it was gonna be. Peter, I'm gonna talk you through this, so if you have any additional questions, just let me know.
Okay.
Alright, so here in revenue, projected now on the screen, this new growth number, which was estimated at fifty thousand when we put this budget together in May, is now closer to eighty thousand, based off of, um, additional research by assessing and the close of the year investigations of building permits, et cetera. Which is good, so we have thirty thousand in additional revenue. We do that about the same time as the town meeting, and we're still, uh, still investigating it, which, which may or may not remember me bringing up to you. And then in local receipts, there's probably room for conservatively ten thousand dollars in expansion of, um, estimates to twenty thousand. Knowing that if you do that, you are risking those numbers not coming true, uh, that would be.
Is that down further, oh, sorry.
Yes, so that change, um,
Thank you.
this came in well above what we expected, this is motor vehicle excise, so there's room there, although
Okay.
I'm hesitant. Uh, pretty conservative with that, and then pilot monies, uh, we can definitely increase that by five to ten thousand, based off projected pilots and state-owned land. So bottom line, you have about thirty to fifty thousand in new revenue estimates that you could put into this budget for, um, decreasing the deficit. So based off the new, new assessment approved by the Quabbin Regional School District last Tuesday, the current deficit in the town budget, if their number was approved, would be a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So if you back out the forty to fifty thousand in new revenue that I talked about, if, if you wanna inject that into the budget, you're looking at a deficit of around a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand.
And that does not take into consideration if the FY twenty-three budget as proposed to the governor gets signed?
Correct, all those numbers are from that budget, so if that got reduced, then, I doubt it, but if that got reduced, then yes, those numbers would change.
Okay. Okay, so that would potentially include an increase in chapter seventy, special education, um, I think regional transportation, and maybe, uh, circuit, was it circuit breaker, or there was another one, special education?
Special.
So the school committee did consider all of that when they changed their assessment.
Okay.
So unless the governor increases it more, I don't think the school committee will.
Okay. So those calculations were already considered with their incre- with the differences?
Yes.
Okay.
So they lowered their total budget by about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, which, we're approximately twenty-five percent of that, so we got a reduction of thirty thousand in their ask.
Do we happen to know, again, Ryan, it's okay if the answer is no on this one. Um, do we happen to know if all of the stuff passes in the governor's budget, with the actual amount of increase for those funding sources are in total compared to what they were originally budgeted?
For the school, I don't know that.
Cause I'm just wondering if like, they equal a hundred and twenty-three thousand, or if like, they equal more than a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
I, I don't think it would be more, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay. Excellent, so what is what are the downsides if we were to say, no, we still are gonna stick to the number we're sticking to, and, uh, here we go?
So the, the technical, how this works, if, you now have forty-five days to consider, if no town did anything, then the school committee's budget passes on the technicality, then we would have to go back anyways and fix our budget, because we'd have a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar hole, so either way, we have to address this. If we went to town meeting and approved the school committee's number, the town meeting did with recommendation from the select board and the finance committee, then we need to, we need to solve that deficit of a hundred and eighty-three thousand to balance the budget, which is required by law. If we say, and recommend a town meeting that, that we go with a different number than the school committee did, whatever the different number is, and we're the only town that does it, the budget passes anyway, and we have to come back to another town meeting and fix the budget with whatever deficit remains. If one of the other two remaining towns votes it down, then it goes back to the school committee for consideration, they have thirty days. If you go August twenty-second, they need to decide by September twenty-second. Once they make, say they decide that on the twenty-second, then we have forty-five days to respond, which is October, mid-November.
Our special town.
So there would be time, based on this timeline, for another consideration, but it's really running up close to the December first deadline. On December first, the commissioner of education takes over the, the Quabbin Regional School District budget and decides based off what the towns are doing, so either way, we're looking at at least two more town meetings. The good side, if there is one, is you've already identified November as a timeframe, and that probably will work if you do early November. So you can have that budget discussion as part of the planning board, um, focused by law, special town meeting you were planning. It's kind of the technocratic version of what's going on here.
So, is it, because we're meeting on Monday, is it possible for us to both sit on this until next Monday, as well as see what happens with the governor's budget before we make strides forward on making an actual recommendation?
You can change the recommendation on town meeting floors, you have until August twenty-second at seven PM to.[1792.14]
Well. But you're gonna have to start with the number.
Yes.
Yeah, but if, Ryan.
It doesn't look as if we're gonna get more money if that switches.
Ryan's saying they already. Yeah, Ryan's saying they already took that into consideration, so it doesn't really, if they truly took that number into consideration, then it's not gonna matter whether it gets voted or not, they've already done that.
Yeah.
Which essentially equals them doing nothing.
That's what I'm saying, they're not gonna.
No, but it means that they, like, I I guess my concern is, right, so everyone, three out of five said, this doesn't work for us, do something.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
They came back and said, we'll reduce it, but if they only reduced it by the amount that the state is going to add additional funding for, they didn't really reduce it.
Yeah. No.
They didn't, they didn't actually say, I, we're taking the hit here, we're making some modifications, we heard you, this number doesn't work, here's what could work, they're simply not doing anything.
Yeah, no, I. Correct.
And that, that bothers them.
Well, they're, they're, yeah, they're only reducing it for what the. State is changing.
Is, is he with us?
He is.
Peter, do you have anything you'd like to throw out?
Uh, um, no, no, I don't.
And we don't know for sure what the other two towns are gonna do. Where they're leading. If they're gonna just, no, we can't, there's no way in how we can pass this, we can't come up with another nickel.
So these are really political discussions, so the.
I know.
The, the idea is the select board and the finance committee make a recommendation to town meeting and then town meeting decides.
Yeah.
Where this budget goes, so the, the school committee is making a recommendation to town meeting. Whether or not you agree with that recommendation is your purview, and that town meeting gets to decide. Traditionally, your recommendation carries a lot of weight. Um, but yeah, to answer your question, the equivalent would have been, if we decided to reconsider the budget and increased our give to the school by about fifteen thousand dollars, is what they did in reverse.
Now by doing nothing. It's going to really hurt the town financially.
In a sense, it depends.
If we don't make an effort to somehow, no matter what is decided. In my understanding, no matter what is decided at the end of all of this, it's, it's hitting us even, you know, to the point that, you know, it's more than we can afford, we're gonna have to make some serious cuts, correct?
You'll have three options, you can increase your revenue projections, which is a dangerous game, cause I don't think we over or under project our revenues. You can use one-time revenues, which will kick the can down the road and cause a massive problem next year, or you can dramatically cut your services. So even using a combination of those three, the service cuts will be significant. Unless you put all the one-time revenue towards it, uh, which will create a a massive hole, so to put that in context, it's sometimes people. So we have about three, with this new money, three hundred and forty thousand in new revenue. So a deficit of a hundred and eighty thousand, if you were to use one-time revenue for that, would be half of all the new revenue the town has, or a little bit less than. So you would have to overcome that hurdle next year, assuming that you got the three hundred and sixty you got, so you'd only have a new increase of a hundred and eighty thousand. The Quavon Regional School District budget for Hubbardson goes up by three percent no matter what you do, and that's about a hundred and sixty thousand, so you'd be starting next year with zero money in terms of new revenue in a basic year. So you have to use one-time revenues again, and then eventually you're not gonna be able to. So one-time revenue is also.
May I?
Yep.
Can I just say one thing? So really, the uh, Quavon Regional didn't reduce their budget for the town, they just used excess state money to reduce the price that we're paying.
So they have a excess of forty million dollar budget and they decreased it by a hundred and twenty thousand, so it's, they didn't really decrease it much, yes.
For all five towns. Right, so they didn't really reduce it.
So they didn't do it.
They did, but not, you know, I understand what you're saying, no.
Ten, yeah, they did, but they didn't, I understand, yeah, alright, well, that's, that's great.
I don't think, I don't think we should just do nothing though, because I think we, you know, we need our, to make our position clear too. That we're not in a position that we're overly accepting this. You mentioned we had forty K, uh, forty K revenue, right?
In new revenue.
In new revenue, can we make use of that somehow? Showing that we're doing, we're trying to do something as a town, even though all that's gonna do is reduce the hurt.
Here's, here's forty grand worth, that's it, that's all we got.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's gonna reduce the the hurt to us, I mean, we're gonna get hurt either way, but at least we're saying, this is it for us.
So I, I think. The state will look at the finances of all the towns and the finances of the school. If we have thirty to forty in revenue that we're holding, I don't think that would look favorably on the town, so I would recommend that. You increase your assessment give by the number that you have.
The orig- the original assessment?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if there's thirty to fifty thousand, you increase and recommend to town meeting. That that money goes towards the, so that would, all new revenue, that would be about eighty percent of all new revenue going to the school.
Which, right.
And see how the town votes on that, I mean, that would be my recommendation, but that is a.
That's, I like that, cause.
Ryan, question? So I pulled up um, the, the cherry sheet, right, calculations for Quavon, for the numbers, chapter seventy and so forth. And the difference between the governor's proposed budget of eighteen mil eight thirty-one zero sixty-six and the conference committee's recommendation of eighteen mil nine eighty-five seven ninety-two. So that's a difference of one fifty-four and some change. Do you happen to know which budget they, and you're probably gonna tell me no, and that's fine, which budget they relied on for state funding when they offered their final assessment before this one?
I believe it was the senate budget.
You believe it was the senate budget?
It's just the same one that's in front of the governor.
The eighteen nine thirty-eight versus the eighteen nine eighty-five? The conference committee was the higher number?
Then I don't know.
Okay, well, I just, I, you know, I don't know, I just feel like it's in bad faith, right, like, I feel like the school's operating entirely in bad faith here. Three towns came back, said, no, we can't afford this, I think if we increase the amount, no matter how we do it, we're, we're hurting ourselves next year, we're putting ourselves in a situation where we just can't keep up. We can't keep increasing the baseline up to here, and then, you know, having a two percent on top of that, a two percent on top of that, cause the base number is getting so big. That that two percent just gets larger and larger and larger, we, we can't do it. We asked them, we said to them, you know, we can't afford this, two other towns said, we can't afford this, we sent it back to them. And all they did was reduce the number by the projected increase in funding they're getting from the state, that's not good faith. I don't know, I mean, I'm only one out of five votes, but my piece is, I'm not interested in increasing the amount of money that we have on the base. I'm interested in making a point here, and I'm, I'm willing to go to bat at that and say, no, I'm sticking to the number we've already said, which. Happy to do another town meeting and vote the number again, so we don't lose in the technicality.
But, then the danger is, depending upon how these other towns go or don't go. If we don't make any effort to reduce the hurt, and we're standing alone. We'll have nothing to fall back on, because the state will say, this is it. You, and we gotta come up and make our cuts.
Well, we could also be making a statement that the other two follow.
And we're in the best position of the three of us, aren't we, of the three towns that are voted no?
In my opinion, yes.
So being in the best position and us saying, no, we're not doing, cause again, it goes back to, I still think we should be doing this on a unified front. All five towns should be sticking together on this and saying, no, this is unacceptable, this is not okay.
But that's not happening, the other, two of them have, have already passed it, right?
But. But at least we have three.
Yeah.
Barry and.
Uh, Ocam, O- Ocam.
So two have already said.
Well, we're gonna have to try to work on that in upcoming years, but right now, we have ground with three, and I think we should be holding our ground and saying, no, this isn't okay. If we were the town that was gonna have to essentially close operations to be able to fund the school budget, I would hope that another town would stand up and say, no.
Well, isn't that pretty much where New Braintree is at, they're pretty much closed. They don't really have too much going on over there, cause they don't have any money.
Yeah, they don't have executive level leadership there, except the select board, so it's harder to get information from them.
So, um, may I speak, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, so, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think the school really cares whether we have to cut the. Uh, services in our town, you're talking police, fire, you know, every service we have, and cutting back, I mean. I mean, that makes the town unsafe. They don't care, they don't, really don't care.
Alright, so what are you in favor for, for keeping the same number or going up a little bit, or what? What do you, what do you wanna do, Peter? What's your thoughts while we can hear you?
Uh, I, I mean, what do we have available, forty thousand in new revenue?
Yes.
Uh. That, that, that would be my limit, uh, but I also like what Heather's saying, you know what I mean, they gotta do something here. They just can't keep killing us with these budgets, I mean, we're gonna stop losing infrastructure in town, and and then you lose infrastructure, I mean, what would happen then? You guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, right, yeah, we're, we're just pondering everything, uh.
Katie was saying.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Probably my forehead.
I, I, I don't know, I don't think they bargained a group face, to be honest with you, that's how I feel.
Can we hold off and put this on the agenda for Monday when we have KP here as well and, you know, for the time being, just pencil in the warrant, the same number, we can adjust it that day?
So you'll have a warrant to review and recommend on Monday, so this would be part of that, either way.
Are you gonna be here Monday or are you off?
Oh, I'm here.
You're here, okay.
Nope, I'm gonna be in Arkansas.
So, so.
Oh, you had. Oh, okay.
So you're saying we can, we could wait a week on this, or?
Yes.
Are you gonna be on Zoom?
Cause.
Jesus.
I agree with a lot, well, you know how I stand about the, the, the school department in terms of uh. The budget, but, I don't know, I just differ in terms of. We're gonna have to pay something, and I'd like to see us pay as little as we have to.
But if the other towns.
Yeah. As opposed to taking the main hit that we're gonna, that, that throwing at us.
There's no, yeah, but if the other towns put either nothing forward or a smaller amount, that it didn't, like, the school, what hap- okay, say we all. Say New Braintree says, I, we have no more money, Hardwick puts a little bit, we put a little bit, then what happens? What, what, it goes to school, and then what?
So I don't wanna sound callous, but it doesn't matter, cause the school committee then reconsideres the budget and they, they come up with their number. So it doesn't, it's more of a signal than it is a actual process.
So if our numbers are less than what they've asked for, regardless, they have to go back to the drawing board?
If it's a dollar less, then yes. But that signals to them where the towns would be willing to go, I mean. I got nothing to lose, most people would go to the table and have this conversation prior to wasting money at town meetings and playing politics, but um. You know, there should be a sit-down with a number that they can either do, or a commentary that it's never gonna be agreeable, so that people can stop wasting their time, we could just tell the state to decide the fate of the communities anyway. Either one is absolutely ridiculous, but those are the options.
Is it possible to try to set up a meeting, ridiculous timeline, but is it possible to try to set up a meeting with um, Sheila and her business manager and. Yourself, someone from the select board, and then someone from each of those other two towns?
They are willing to meet.
Would that be possible to do prior to, you know, even if we set the um, the warrant on Monday prior to our uh, special town meeting, so we can all put everyone at the table there? Or at least representatives from this committee, um, and yourself just to represent the opinions?
What about the school committee, them too?
Let's, I, well, how big this party do you really wanna, this, who, who's?
Like.
Where is this meeting gonna be?
Well, if we're calling the meeting, we can have wherever we want, can't we?
Well.
But I'm just saying, if you're.
I think the administration is, is accommodating to meeting and discussing. Um, changing their opinion, no, but meeting and. You know, they're very open to discussion, I've always been able to get a meeting and find them to be very professional, so if they want, if you wanna meet with them, they will meet. But they don't have the authority to change the budget.
Okay, so who actually, the, the school committee, so then you'd have to have a school committee.
Are they school committee round?
Or, yeah, at least.
Well, maybe we should talk about this more next week and give some more thought to it. Cause I think we don't want a meeting with fifty-five people.
Well, we'll see how they feel when they can't have a fu- policeman or a fireman show up at their house for a problem.
They don't live in town, doesn't matter, Peter.
Well, th- uh, four of them do, oh, four.
Three. There's only three, right?
I didn't hear that.
A couple of them do.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
This twenty-one, school committee members, twenty spots filled, Hubbardson only has three, and a fourth.
Yeah.
Which doesn't carry that much weight.
Well, yeah, but there's other towns that can't afford it, and this is no passing.
Uh, I'm not.
Ryan, would you be able to reach out to, um, what'd you say, Ocam and New Braintree, they were the ones who said no, or Hardwick?
Hardwick, Hardwick and New Braintree.
Hardwick and New Braintree, and just communicate with them the conversation that we had this evening and the select board and the. Sense you got of some appetite, interest, and, you know, sticking together?
Yeah.
Based on s- some of the feedback from the last round of this, I would prefer the board provide me a vote in direction. So as not to violate the open meeting law.
To reach out? For you to reach out? Okay, go for it, you get to do it, cause you know what you want.
Oh, one call. Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, I just wanna understand what. What's hap- what's happening in terms of, you're requesting?
So we, I, I would like to see if the board will have the appetite to direct Ryan to reach out directly to the um. The person or persons in charge, cause I think one town does not have a executive level staff. Um, to communicate with them, um, the happenings of this meeting and the discussions pertaining to wishing to stick together, united with the other towns, as well as. Um, see if we can all be on the same page.
And, and you're requesting a meeting, then?
Not necessarily, just Ryan to communicate, so one of them has a TA, leave Hardwick has a TA, so Ryan would reach out to the TA there.
Letting them know how we are feeling about this.
We, you know, I was directed by the select board to communicate the following.
Okay.
And then whether she says or does not say something, that's fine.
No, I mean, that, no, I'm fine with that, cause in terms of a meeting and everything else, and our deadline of August twenty-second, that's a heck of a lot of people to try to, you know.
Well, but the whole thing too with the meeting is, we're not gonna get anywhere, we can sit here and throw numbers around all day long, and if it doesn't meet their numbers, they are gonna have to go back. And fiddle around and try to come up with a number, and it may or may not change, it might come back here, and like Ryan said, it's gonna just keep going back and forth, because.
Well, we run out of chances, I mean, you turn it down once, you turn it down twice, the third time it goes to the state.
It goes. And then it goes to the state, yeah.
If, if the.
And then you can't.
If the school committee could meet with the towns and agree to a number that no one's gonna be happy with, but everyone can live with, that is preferable.
Right.
To going to town meeting and confusing residents with.
Yeah.
A process that's in a reasonable agreement, that may or may not make sense.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
To, to decide this, uh, that's what the school committee is, is for. I wish and have advocated in all my years here that the school committee met with the towns prior to coming up with numbers, so they would understand this, rather than waiting until. The politics kick in at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It just, cause all it does is it gets bad feelings between, it pits the town against the school, the finance and select board against the school committee, and it just, it doesn't work.
Okay, then I would be happy to entertain a motion for, as you stated. To direct, to direct our town administrator, okay?
I.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the, so, we as a select board direct Ryan to contact the town administrator in Hardwick. And the chair of the select board in Ocam, Ocam, New Braintree.
The br-.
New Braintree, um, to communicate this evening's um, conversation pertaining to the school budget and. Uh, the position that the select board would like to present a united front. Um, with regards to the school budget being on the same page as those towns.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, any discussion? Peter, did you hear all that?
No. Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm a yes for this.
Alright then, uh, seeing no more discussion, we'll vote, Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. So this discussion on the budget, we're tabling until next, our next meeting, is that correct? So that'll be on the agenda also?
Yes.
Till next week, for August first, okay?
All future events.
So did we want to try to tackle with the so- the school committee at all, or no? We, do we not even? What, what is our outline?
Well, let's see what he gets as a response.
Okay, but that's only gonna.
By reaching out, you know?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's only, that's, we're gonna, we're meeting next week, and then what? Like, how long do we keep screwing along with us?
Well, maybe, who knows what happens when he meets with the, or discusses with those other two towns, if they're all on the same page, and everyone agrees that it's on the same page, and it becomes public that's on the same page. Then that could always be communicated at that time to the school, as well as the school committee, and also making a recommendation that perhaps they wanna consider. Before town meetings cycle through again, the notion of doing, just as Ryan said, finally sitting down, having a meeting with all the towns, and adjusting their own number.
Mm-hmm.
Before we go to those town meetings again, so it gets closer to where everyone wants to be. But, I just, this is.
But, it just, this is so stupid. I'm sorry, this is just insane.
Well, it's frustrating, because
It, it is.
Every year, it's the same thing, and it's So, I mean, I'm totally on board with making a stance, et cetera, as, as he was, what'd he say?
We can only afford to pay so much.
Right.
I mean, we can pay what we can pay, and that's it, and we're tapped out, what are you supposed to do? Down everything?
It's just, it doesn't, you can't pull money out of thin air, all we're gonna do is cut stuff. This is like budget one-on-one.
Yeah, but they don't care, they don't care, that's the problem. They don't care about the towns.
But it would be, it would be a major mistake also to try to cover the cost, exhausting the funds that we have, because next year
We're screwed.
You have no money.
Totally screwed.
So, we just can't do that.
It's, we're in trouble, we're, all these towns are in trouble, and the school doesn't care. They just want their money, so they can get their three, three, and three, and whatever else they do, and all the other hidden agendas on their side. That's how I feel.
It's just, I mean, like, New Braintree, they don't even have executive staff over there, they're so hurting. You know, there's just, I don't understand where they think this money is coming from, because all of our costs are going up, including, and the school budget is seventy percent of our budget, like, we're, we can't just magically make this stuff appear.
Nope.
They don't care.
I just wanna hit the Lotto, I really do, like, I wanna hit that mega Lotto, like, so hard, and just
It's not gonna help the town, okay?
I will, 'cause I, oh, yeah, build the building.
And build our own high school.
Yep. Build my own little Katie land.
Mike?
Jeff, thank you, uh, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. Um, Ryan, if we were to look at the tax rates of the various towns that are involved, who's got the lowest tax rate per thousand?
I, I would have to research that, like, I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh, really? Okay. Um, I think it's Hubbardston, um, last time I checked anyhow. So, somebody could, um, make the case that you're overly conservative fiscally in Hubbardston, which I happen to agree with, I think that's a good position for us, but unfortunately, that then makes it look like, well, you're not as hurting as you are, because you did a good job, you know, managing your money. Um, the other thing is, it seems like the analogy I would come up with here is that, um, the school district is like the dealer at the blackjack table. You know, the rest of us are players at the table, but the house, the odds are in favor of the house.
Also always wins.
The deal, right, and, um, in the long run, and they know that, and I gotta agree with Peter that, you know, I'm not sure that there's so much don't care, but they know that they're in the catbird seat, they're the dealer, you know, they're gonna control the situation. Is that a kind of a fair analogy?
Oh, I'm not answering that.
You know, like, my analogy, well, that's what, that's kind of the way, the sense I get, and that the process is kind of flawed, but it's flawed, um, in favor
Yes, in favor.
Their fa- their, it's flawed in the school district's favor, so we can keep hitting the wall, or we a- and it's, it's too late to do in this fiscal year, maybe even the next fiscal year, who knows? But eventually, if you don't change the process, we will be back doing the same thing every year. And I think I've been back long enough that I heard us, um, go through several special town meetings last year regarding the school, or the year before.
Every year.
Okay, every year. Okay.
Pretty much.
Then, I paid attention well enough, I guess.
I will deflect from your question and answer it this way. The, the problem is, even with the low tax rate, let's say all that's true, and it's overly conservative here, you still need to build public support in order to increase revenues to the level, so that the request from the school committee is more money than the town has coming in this year total.
Sure.
Just that, that one request, and there's still expenses on the municipal side. So in order to increase revenue, you would need to build consensus amongst the residents that the service level needs to increase. The only way you're gonna do that is have both sides talk. So the school and municipal side would have to make the argument to the community together, that here is where the levels would be. That's the only way communities pass the type of overrides that are necessary to fund that level of education. If you're not willing to do both, then it is a bad faith argument. Where is that new revenue gonna come from?
Thank you.
So, if, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanna, just wanna clarify one thing for anyone listening at home. So just remember that the tax rate and the average tax bill are different things. So we could have the lowest tax rate going around, and we could still have a very high tax bill, right? So we, people often look at the tax rate, and they think that's the governing number that says, okay, where you are with things, but it's really the tax bill for the single-family home, that you wanna compare from community to community of how much you're paying, if that makes sense.
Uh, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road, it makes sense, it's just an easy number to pull, and people build their arguments by numbers that are simple and pretty easy to, to, to pull and, and make comparisons by.
They do.
They also pull numbers that, or say things that fit their agenda too, so.
Sure.
Okay, then, Jeff, and I think we should put this off until next week. I think it's clear that we, as a board, definitely wanna make a strong statement, you know, that we, we can't keep having to deal with this every single year without something changing, that we can't afford it, et cetera, but as to how we want to make it appear on this particular budget, I think is still up in the air, 'cause 'cause I know Heather and I have two different feelings about that, along with the agreeing that, that, uh, enough is enough. Um, but oh, we'll be okay, uh, Ryan, if we table this until the next meeting, and then we'll, we'll have, Chris here and
And hopefully Peter.
Peter, you back then? By next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So you could make it on, uh, the first of August?
Yep, no problem.
So that would be my suggestion. An- any objection? Okay. Alright then, we'll table that, and let's move on, uh, to old business, uh, do we have any old business? Okay, your T-A report?
Quick report, the, um, I have engaged with an municipal assessor, appraiser, right word, to, and communicated with John's auto, per the board's direction, to appraise that building for potential use as a public safety building, per the app, app application and discussions with the select board. So everybody's on board to appraise that. The goals of that would be to see if the number even makes sense, and then to engage John with a timeline. Um, he understands that this is all just preliminary, so that should get done in the next sixty days, and then that meets your goal of providing a report by February, because once that is known, we would engage a firm, consulting firm, to do a feasibility study on, on all of these different variations and provide the board with those options for a public safety building within the parameters that you set. Um, there's a wage authorization for the town custodian, so Jerry, our longtime custodian, well, a couple of years now has been a custodian, he is retiring, retiring, for, I think, the fourth time. So he will be, uh, missed, we've enjoyed having him here. Gabby Walker, who works in the library, is going to take over custodian duties in a temporary appointment, so this is not going to be a full-time position. It'll be temporary for six months, certain probation. If that works out and it makes sense, we can fit in the budget, we will make a permanent employee. She also works in the library, she, she would exceed nineteen hours. So I do, am asking the board to waive the notification period for her wage authorization, so we can pay her for this extra time.
Okay. Chair would accept a motion?
Alright, I'll make a motion to waive the, um, uh, authorization for Gabby Walker, was it?
Notification.
Notification period, sorry. Wage authorize-ization notification period, right? Did I get it?
Motion made.
Sorry.
Second.
Second.
Trying to click on it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, uh, Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And, yes.
Okay, lastly, uh, Cruz and Thompson Road are receiving their top coat today from the chapter ninety program, finishing the aprons. We've been getting some questions from residents about unfinished driveways, that's all part of this top coat. All of that will be depleted to spec, and should be done by the weekend. Those projects are successful, um, very expensive, as you know.
Yeah.
Prices keep going up, we've been talking about asphalt, but I do think that it'll fit in the chapter ninety allocation and the town meeting vote for additional funds to complete this project.
It's much nicer down there, let me tell you. Even with the first coat, it was much nicer.
That is all.
That's all, a little bit, okay, uh, policies review, none that I know of, alright. Matt, who's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have nothing. Public press, any questions?
None.
Okay, then.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second to adjourn, no discussion, meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Peter.
Alright, thank you, sorry about all the communication issues.
Not your fault.
I think some of it's on, I do think some of it's on your end, so
You should be sorry.
I don't know what's, yeah, yeah.
When you got a couple of hours, I'll tell you how much I love Zoom.
So, Mike, our average tax bill
I'll see y'all next Monday.
Thanks, Peter.
FY twenty-two.